All right, why don't we go ahead and call tonight's work session to order? And the first item is the Columbia County update. Mr. Commissioner.
How do you like that?
You know you don't want to spend all night with us, so.
Yeah, I know.
You're more than welcome to.
Thank you.
All right, there we go. Got a little update. It wasn't... It's a good thing it reminded me because my calendar would have been minutes before the meeting, so I decided to be Friday, so I appreciate that.
Oh, perfect.
Put together a little document here just to kind of give an update on what's been happening in the county. I was told that you guys are kind of looking for an annual update. I went back maybe a little bit further than annual update because I don't think we did this a year ago. So I'll start with a real significant transition in county leadership that I think is worth noting. For our department heads in Columbia County, in the last 20 months, we've hired a new Director of Community Corrections, a new Director of Emergency Management, a new Director of General Services, a new Director of Human Resources, a new Director of Public Transit, a new Director of Land Development Services, a new Director of Finance and Taxation. Recruitment process is happening now, final interviews hopefully are tomorrow. The Director of Public Health is just going out for recruitment. And significant program managers, Land Use Planning Manager, County Building Official, I apologize, but I'm sure we will continue to partner and work together. But we did steal one of your valuable employees in that way. Assistant Public Works Director and a solid Waste Coordinator. We've also appointed a County Assessor and a County Clerk and District 16 State Senator. So that's a whole lot of change to happen in 20 months and the bulk of that in the last 12 months. That represents 11 out of 16 departments within the county. So that says something. And for the most part, that's retirements that have made that happen. So a really big opportunity, one of the most important things we do as commissioners, Columbia County Commissioners, is appoint and hire these positions directly because these folks likely will be here for the long haul and much longer than us as elected officials will be. With that, there's plenty of new faces for you folks to get to know and get to meet and collaborate with on any number of things when it comes to city and county business. Beyond that, next slide there, showing up a little funky, but that's all right. Go back one. Some major projects, strategic investments largely fueled by COVID-19 relief dollars and American Rescue Plan dollars and many grants and other funding sources that we've drummed up. But we have the John Gum and Courthouse renovations is probably our largest project right now. The goals of this project will be to relocate our county administrative offices and state court offices, provide a new home for the Columbia County Economic Team, COLPAK, the Columbia Pacific Economic Development Agency, our new Small Business Development Center, a new county museum, a new public auditorium, and a new public health center. So pretty ambitious project. We have about sort of six months left of design development for that project before we officially sign contracts to move forward with the work. Like with any construction project in these times, we're struggling a little bit with the budget. We have $2 million granted by the state. We're going after a $1 million solar grant, $500,000 museum grant that we should know by the end of this week, we feel pretty confident about, and then an additional $2 million from the state that we'll find out about in July. All in all, significant project, once in a 50, 60-year opportunity. We feel really good about our goals and objectives with the project. At the moment, I'd say we're through the $3 million funding gap we're trying to take care of. So some of these grants coming through would make all the difference in the world. Prescott Beach land acquisition is another big one, 63 acres of PGE-owned property. We've leased that property for about 30 years with limited abilities to develop on the property because of the lease restrictions. We've negotiated a very, very good deal, $250,000 for the 63 acres of property. We're in the final phases of finalizing that deal. We're doing a Phase 1 environmental analysis. There was an old mill on the site that we want to make sure that we don't purchase something that turns into something we wouldn't have wanted with our development goals, but feel pretty confident about that acquisition being finalized by the end of this year. Broadband study, we've invested some significant funds into broadband. We have about $1 million more slated to go towards those efforts. We've kind of taken a regional approach with COLPAK. We're preparing last mile grant applications right now for some last mile hookup opportunities. And we have an RFP going out for facilities, fiber connections between county facilities. Ambulance service area study, we get tomorrow, actually, something that you guys may want to tune into. I believe it's at 10:00 a.m. We have a special meeting with the consultant we've worked with on the ambulance service area study to evaluate ambulance service areas around the county. That's a county obligation, Oregon Health Authority, to ensure that we're up to par with our ambulance service areas. It's a challenging deal. We have most of our fire agencies that take on those service areas. There are obvious areas, Vernonia, Miss Berkenfield, Platscanai, that maybe aren't quite up to par. So we'll receive some options on how to maybe move forward and improve those tomorrow, after tomorrow's meeting, hopefully that goes well. Hospital feasibility study, we're in the middle of negotiating a contract to pursue that analysis. That really comes down to the first step determining after 10 or so years.
You might have just answered it. When's the last time we did a hospital feasibility study?
You know, I wasn't paying a ton of attention at that time to this sort of stuff, but we're over 10 years and it wasn't necessarily a feasibility study as much as an effort to put in a hospital off the broad road.
There was a feasibility study that was done, then...
Before then.
Yeah, then the tax was voted in, the whole hospital thing, and then...
There's quite a lot of history to dig into there. So, I mean, I think it's appropriate to do a fresh look. My personal opinion, I'm not extremely confident that we're going to come up with a magical solution that produces a hospital, but I think the approach is to say, okay, if we were to qualify for some funds that are available now versus then, there's some debate to go along with that. Find a location, figure out a fund of building and a healthcare partner to staff it, and does that all pencil out and what would be the tax burden? So we'll receive options on what some different scenarios are.
The number one thing that's going to be needed is, that needs to be studied, is whether or not the county can receive a certificate of need. And that's what was rejected last time, which caused the hospital to fall apart. In the state of Oregon, there has been no change to the law that requires a certificate of need to cite a hospital.
Depends on location. So I think Deer Island's been one of the spots. And I think there's some difference of opinions if we would have continued to apply. And again, it's not a pet peeve project of mine, but I think it's worth looking at.
I remember getting all the people coming to city council about it, even though it wasn't ours.
I think the big thing will come down to, you know, is this something that would support more than greater St. Helens or be a true benefit to all of Columbia County? And that's going to be a tough argument for me to get on board with, at the same time utilizing some of the American Rescue Plan dollars for something that we're asked about a lot is what's the potential to have emergency room service, something more than we have now. There's a need there. At the same time, we live in an interesting place where we have Longview in Portland and Beaverton Hillsborough area kind of all around us. So depending on where you're at in the county, that the service needs are pretty well met there. They're just not as close as we'd like them. I think that really comes, in my mind, it was just up to me. This ambulance service area study might be something to really look at because the sooner you get EMTs to somebody that's in trouble, regardless of how far away the hospital is, I'd be willing to bet life expectancy goes up exponentially the sooner you get an ambulance to somebody. So if we're going to invest in something, my gut tells me at the moment that would be the thing to invest in. But in Columbia County, anything that, any time we go out and ask taxpayers for more money, it's not easy. So we'll see where those things go. I think it's a, there's valid reason to look at the hospital situation again, but I think it's important to note that we're looking at the ambulance service area at the same time, and those really kind of go hand in hand in my mind. Water needs analysis, Commissioner McGruder has really stepped up at a state level to look at water needs throughout the state and has kind of spearheaded efforts to evaluate that statewide. There'll be likely upcoming legislation that will impact our ability to provide water residents throughout the state. At the moment, and my understanding, Scappus Bay watershed, along with some of you city folks, to some extent have been involved in some of the preliminary process, there's a, they're going after legislative funds to hire a consultant to help herd cats around this, herd all the different stakeholders around the state to engage in that process. And there'll likely be a follow-up meeting in October. Commissioner McGruder will be reaching out to you folks for a date on where that study's at.
I'll wait for Commissioner McGruder to be able to share with us.
Yeah, and she's really taken that by the reins, so she'd be the best to talk about there. We're just developing an RFP for a county records management system to go, the goal of going, never be paperless, but much closer to paperless than we are now. One of the things I'm excited about this project is archive scanning and our GIS mapping system and records to access through our mapping system. I'd like to see through this effort all of our planning, septic building documents available in GIS, just like survey documents are now. It's going to be a bit of a heavy pull, but we have, I think we have the funds to pull that off and would be a very nice feature for landowners and developers to access that information without having to come to the courthouse and receive it over the counter. That's a goal of that. Little technology upgrade, we did just upgrade to Office 365, which gives us MicroSep teams now and hopefully a little better platform than we currently are using. And then the last but not least, fairgrounds, indoor arena planning. I think it will likely turn into more of a conceptual master plan development. We might pull 100 or so grand to go towards developing schematics for indoor arena plan. A big part of that is having a facility that's multi-use, that's not only for the fair, also for opportunities throughout the year for entertainment, but also for emergency operations purposes. If we do have a big earthquake, if there's the things that could happen emergency-wise, have a location that FEMA in our emergency operations and everybody around the county could relocate to if need be, and to try to pursue funding that might be available to go towards actually building a marine, indoor arena. That, you know, it could be a $10 million to $30 million, who knows? I mean, it could be a very costly project, but provide a lot of benefit to the county. So it's something that we do want to at least put on paper and be ready for future grant opportunities, and opportunities that may arise. That's kind of a con dirty up, update on the projects and investments in the works other than regular day-to-day business. With that, a couple of visuals, John Gum facility, for those who do not know, it's two blocks away from our county courthouse, an old annex and old courthouse. So location's good. Next slide.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
What are like the offices in the current courthouse going to be used for when you do make the transition?
Reconfiguring state court operations. Right now, we have state courts on several floors between the six floors of the old courthouse and the annex. So trying to centralize state court into the third floor of the annex by adjacent to the courtroom. So if you pay a ticket, if you deal with anything to do with state courts, you go to one floor of the courthouse, the main floor of the courthouse. So the Board of Commissioners offices would move out of their HR, all of our county operations. The main floor of the annex would be counter facing business for the county operations. So building permits, planning, surveying, clerk, assessor, elections, all county counter operations to happen on one floor, counter system. The basement would be a public health facility and then archive storage in the old jail space. And then the old courthouse, the ultimate goal would be to move the district attorney's office over to predominantly the top two, top two floors of the old courthouse to provide more separation between the district attorney operations and the court's best practices. You don't have those as close as they are right now. So a real opportunity, and we add 30,000 square feet with John Gum, and that provides the space to shuffle county and state operations around in a way that's better for customer service and flow of internal operations. It's the ultimate goal. With that, like I said, we have a bit of a funding gap right now, but are optimistic on a few grants out there that will help us close that gap. And it's going to be a couple-year process to get through the public health facility. 28th will get presented with guaranteed maximum price. And those plans are in the Department of Office right now in St. Helens, and that 5,000 or 6,000 square feet of renovation will be done by January, February if we agree on the price. So beyond that, March of 24, I believe, is our current schedule for John Gum. And hopefully a year after that or so finalize renovations within the rest of the annex to move the rest of those operations around.
I think it's really cool that the county's using a historic old school for converting it to offices. I can't think of any other historic old buildings, Scappus or St. Helens that maybe could be used in that way, or I can in the future.
Well, something neat about John Gum, something neat about John Gum is private owner, bought it 20 years ago, did significant seismic upgrades, new roofs, new sprinklers. If it wouldn't have been for that work, they put $1 million of their own money, bought the building for $500,000, times have changed, put $1 million of their own money into those upgrades. We bought the building for $1 million and a half. If it wouldn't have been for those upgrades, it wouldn't even been able to consider this project. And you know, the building, the nature of it, being an old school, it's got the columns up front. It feels and looks like a government building. Previous owner was doing everything they could to pay their mortgage, but if you would have witnessed some of the stuff going on in that building, it was, I think, a hard thing to control. But I think it will ultimately be a good thing to get it back into public use. And it wouldn't have lasted long, some of the activities that were happening.
Casey, I'd be excited to know, what are you planning to do with the back portion of the lot? Is that going to be parking for facilities? There's a good portion of the lot in the back of the property, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, there's what was a covered place structure. That's been enclosed in with bay doors that was rented out, bay by bay. Current, we don't have current immediate plans for that space other than nice to have a little extra storage. Museum storage is, will likely take up one of the bays. Our parks' facilities workers, they're kind of a stepchild where they bounce between public works and the county courthouse. We have a wood shop inside of the county courthouse. It's not necessarily ideal, but works. So we'll probably shift some of those shop operations over there. Ability to expand later, I think, is having that real estate available to go up with in the future. I think it's a prime candidate for 20 to 50 years from now, likely when we need more space. Our current plan basically guts the basement of John Gum, but we don't have immediate operations going into that space. So there'll be 10,000 square foot to grow into after we finish the top two floors. So after we grow into that space, just having that real estate available. It could turn into parking, but we do have a public parking lot next door and some pretty good on-street parking. So I'd hope that it doesn't just turn into parking and available for future growth.
So just shelling out the basement level for future...
Shelling out the basement, doing all of the electrical, mechanical, I mean, upgrades, sprinkler upgrades to the space, but having a shelf space that's ready to occupy. As we move into old courthouse renovations, if we are able to relocate the district attorney's office, the juvenile corrections might be a good fit for a small part of that basement space. There'll be some archive storage that will go down there immediately, small area, but there'll be well over half, pushing three-quarters of the space that's just shelf space ready to do something with at a later point.
Casey, quick question. How much was that museum grant that you approved?
Asking for $500,000 from the Cultural Coalition of Oregon.
Oregon Coalition.
Oregon Cultural Coalition. I'll tell you what, I've done a lot of grants over the last eight years, applications, and this was probably the most collaborative, well-put-together application we've ever done. The Museum Association, Columbia County Museum Association is an amazing group, but we have the Economic Team, Travel Oregon, COLPAK, a whole bunch of support and collaboration on putting together the application. It's actually a pretty impressive document that I'd like to make, assuming we win the award, just to show what, how far collaboration can go between some different nonprofits and local agencies that we all have access to. There's always talk about hiring a grant writer, and that would solve all of our problems. I'm not necessarily a believer in that. I think we have a lot of those assets available at our fingertips. It's just a matter of working together and putting together professional, strong applications, showing the partnerships that are pretty available and involved. So I'm feeling really good about that. I don't want to jinx it, but I think by the end of this week, we'll get word. And it's, it's a endorsement is what we're after from the coalition. And once you get that endorsement, they help you through the legislative process where there's already funds allocated just to get your name put on those funds. So the amount of match that we view in so many different ways is so well above and beyond $500,000 that in a historic building at the location, not being compromised by state court operations. Our museum right now is great, but there's a lot of interesting activity that happens right outside of the museum. It's not accessible. And, you know, buddy in shackles walking by and all the stuff that happens inside of a courtroom isn't ideal. It was never equipped to be a museum, so this is an opportunity to have brand-new renovated space in a historically significant building. So really excited about it and pretty confident. No matter what, we'll figure out something. This would just really take it above and beyond habit, really professional quality space.
Thanks to everybody that pulled that together. I know it's a big effort, so.
Yep, a big pull and lots of people to thank. Fingers crossed by the end of this week, we'll tell you whether we got the endorsement or not, and I'll be amazed if we didn't. As you can see here, public auditorium, separate conference room, these spaces will be available for public events is our intention, brand-new prep kitchen, all brand-new ADA accessible restrooms, a wing dedicated to Economic Team, just it's an economic center, Small Business Development, COLPAK, CET, everybody there, RSVP reception area, elevator accessible all three floors, the new museum, that's kind of the main floor lookout, look, the A B cap ramp up front, so fully accessible. Next slide. Upstairs really is the administrative function, its future office, a little bit of back and forth on that will likely be finance space, but basically all of our county administration will be up there, publicly accessible for conferences, meetings, and boards offices. Will free up a lot of the counter service operating space for the rest of county operations and annex. And then next slide, this is the first phase that we will likely pull the trigger on next week for what ultimately was mostly the land development services area in the annex space, but a new full-blown public health facility with exam rooms, administrative offices, conference area. We're also putting in a new mail receiving and sorting area for better mail handling practice. Now we have, where mail comes into the main floor of the courthouse, which isn't ideal. So this is, I think, almost 6,000 square foot of space. So be a nice location. Right now, our public health is about three different areas and has grown from one person to 20 in the last few years, believe it or not. So that's kind of the, at least plans development right now. Like I said, the old courthouse and annex, there's additional design development work that we lock in, we're seeing and scheduled with these three floors, along with the basement of John Gum building, the shelf space, be moving on to the rest of the old courthouse and annex upgrades, assuming funding gaps get filled. On that, some of the funner stuff, asked to give a little update on county parks and tourism initiative. Yet somewhat recently, the report is just coming out for Travel Oregon, Columbia Economic Team Destination Ready Workshop that we worked, the county was involved with, Isaac meetings. Really, the focus became water river access. Travel Oregon would like to see the ends that were the county with the most Columbia River access in the state out of all other counties. Columbia River is a huge asset when it comes to tourism. So this workshop really focused on water access. Really what came out of that is that most immediate product development opportunities were Prescott Beach and Sand Island. As I said, Prescott Beach, we're in the middle of, just seen and have some development plans I'll share with you in it. And Sand Island has really grown into a popular destination. Chapman Landing also came up. It's just more of a timing thing on the city's readiness to proceed with Chapman Landing development. So I know that will be, I'll have a lot of opportunity for Travel Oregon support as you folks move along with Chapman Landing sign concepts. So we've built a pretty good relationship with Travel Oregon over the last few years and something we could absolutely leverage for.
Five minutes.
All right, well, keep moving. Recent grants, we've just got awarded a Holst Trailhead Grant for the end of the Crown Z Trail in Vernonia. It's about a $200,000 project. Hudson Partridge Park play structures, 80 grand for three new structures to go in three locations in Hudson Partridge Park.
How did you stretch 80,000 across three playgrounds?
You know, they're county playgrounds. So they all come with, there's, you know, some decent play. We're a little bit budget-built, but our staff will take on some of the...
You having any matches from the...
The match, you know, I'd have to talk to, I think there was a, for that level, I don't know if we required a match for that level, or the match is not 50%.
I'm shocked.
Now, they're not...
Huge.
Not huge, but they're ample playground space for a campground. So, and that does include, you know, a new whole play structure, new swing sets and excavator things, and, you know, enough stuff for a county park. So that's actually three different, little new merry-go-round, death trap, that's safer, safer new version.
Bringing those back.
So yeah, check it out. Next year, you'll have that done.
Don't think I will, but thank you.
Other projects, interpretive signage, historical signage has been a big thing for us over the last year or two. We have over, you know, if I go back to that year and a half, we finished 20 new structures. That's over somewhere between 60 and 80 historical images, interpretive images that are also accessible through the crownzetrail.com, a website development. Highway 47 wayfinding signage to connect the Crown Z Trail to Banks Vernonia Trail, bike hubs. We actually have one ready for you guys when we find a location, but a bike hub grant that we got through the Economic Team and Travel Oregon that showed bike routes around the city of Scappus. We've installed them in Rainier, Platscanai, and Vernonia as well. And we're working on historical interpretive signs that match the Crown Z Trail to go into the city of Vernonia, city of Platscanai, and city of Rainier to talk about local history. I've talked with your parks folks recently about the same concept between Turtic and Chapman Landing to really show off local history and to use a consistent design that looks very much like the Crown Z Trail. So I have more to come with you guys soon on that. Some county donations, some grant opportunities, and some private donations that could go towards just the Scappus installations on their own. Again, Prescott Beach, goals there, overnight camping, tent RV cabins, restroom showers, river access, including boat launch dock and ADA fishing pier, walking trails, and wildlife viewing areas, and event venue amenities. And 20 years later, we hope to accomplish all of those things, but we've developed some nice conceptual plans. It's a very hot topic for Travel Oregon, very confident in getting grant funds year over year to do nice things at Prescott Beach for river access. Camp Wilkerson, we've recently added about 10 new camp sites that are just about open to the public. We're working on five new cabins, vault toilet and power service water extensions. There's about 50 sites there now. So it'll be about 20% addition to camping amenities at Camp Wilkerson. A lot of this is based off of findings out of the destination workshop plan that we, or whatever the Travel Oregon called it, but... or whatever the Travel Oregon called it, but this hub and spoke thing was an exercise that was created out of that plan, but river recreation and other recreation kind of be in the focus, all the obvious stuff. You know, you have your main street, food and beverage, but cultural, historical assets, museums, we have lots of museums throughout the county that's gaining more traction. Camping has just blown up for us. It's turned into, we used to have a $300,000 deficit a year, we have a $200,000 surplus now, and that's all happened within the last five or six years for our campgrounds. So we're adding camp sites as fast as we can. Parks, an important feature, but I think Columbia County has really gotten to a point where Travel Oregon's recognizing us as an asset approximately to Portland and the quick weekend getaways. And that's something the city of Scappus, all cities within Columbia County benefit from, that tourism development, that really doesn't have to cost a fortune.
I'm going to have to, we have a second group coming to give an update. They're only giving you 30 minutes, I'm sorry.
Got a couple more good things for you.
We've got them here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, you know, I remember when the whole tourism thing and you and I, you're working for the county, not elected, that was a great start for us. Thank you for everything.
What you need to know about Casey is that he got his start in politics at Peterson School as our student body president in sixth grade.
Yes, I was never perfect. I probably still managed to get in school suspension at least once that year, but.
Playing both sides of the line.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, our next group is Scappus Community and Senior Center.
Oh, you got it, you got it, Kay.
You got a partner.
There you go. Okay, we've basically been.
You just moved the microphone right up to you, it's just for the record.
Basically been dealing mostly with repairs, rejuvenation, and hopefully getting it up to where we can actually be doing meals or whatever in full capacity. However, we keep getting setbacks and today was another one. I would thank you again for the 15, for the HVAC unit that we needed. Well, now it turns out we need three. And consequently, that just happened this morning, a repairman came in and showed me pictures of what the units looked like and the one that we had ordered repairs on. It couldn't be repaired, but it would be several thousand dollars down the tube because these units that we're talking about are 25 years old already and parts, I believe that all three of them are from the same manufacturer. And my understanding is they no longer manufacture HVACs, plus the fact that they have changed the, the gizzard, innards, the gizzards.
Yeah.
On the new units and consequently, parts are very tough to get on these. And we feel that we need to just go ahead and order three new ones, and that's where we're at right now. I'm working on a grant to hopefully pay for two of them. Sounds promising, but we don't know yet. Other than that, it's just a daily plod. We need to, we need to have some more board members. If anybody can help us there.
Yeah, there we go.
We just lost one today. We lost one two weeks ago, so we barely have a quorum right here to deal with what we need to and on an ongoing basis. We do have activities going. Our bingo is Monday and Friday nights on a regular basis, starts out with what's called speed bingo at, what, 4:30, and moves on into regular bingo, get out about 9:30. We've also added an old-fashioned slide card bingo on Wednesday afternoon for those who don't drive at night. And it's slow in starting, but it's picking up and hopefully those will come forward again. Quilters have been really busy, their quilting, quilt sale on the fence down here at the school was a huge success this year, bringing in around $8,000. So we did very well on that. And I will say that a little expenditure ahead of time for a couple of mobile readers made that all possible, that we could take credit cards and didn't have to handle all that cash. The garden is producing right now, in fact, I think they might have an abundance of tomatoes. At least they brought in a whole bunch to the center this morning. Now, they may all disappear tonight at bingo, I don't know. A lot of them disappeared today. We get squash and beans and squash, beans, peppers, and.
Beets and potatoes.
Beets and potatoes, yeah, all kinds of goodies. And they seem to be going out rather rapidly. They had an order that was filled yesterday on Sunday, and another one is going to go out on Thursday for the tomatoes, so moving right along on the garden. The, well, tomorrow, they're all going to be busy because we're going to be at the senior fair in St. Helens, hopefully showing off a little bit of what the senior center can do. We need more young people to get involved. It seems to be very difficult to convince them they could spend a few hours a day helping us out. We're all getting older and quite frankly, I won't climb a ladder anymore. And that's one of my biggest problems when anything goes wrong is who can I get to climb the ladder to fix it? We did have another excellent donation that started this last week. That was on Wednesday, we had a volunteer come in and the company donated used LED bulbs and this gentleman rewired all of the lights in our dining room and switched them from the old ballast to LEDs. So sometime this week or next week, he will be finishing the rest of the building. And as far as I know, it will be at no cost to us, so that was, and that happens to be the son of one of our newest members, so we need more new members.
Does he have a company?
Pardon?
Do you have a company?
I am not supposed to mention that yet.
Okay. Give him props.
Don't put me on the spot that way. Now, due to the nature of the HVAC problems, we can't keep those units on, so the sooner I can get that done, we just voted tonight that we will order the three, well, we've got one ordered already, but we will order two more units tomorrow morning. They think they can ship all three at the same time, which would give us one crane expense and one overall installation expense. And they also felt that the possibility of getting a reduced price by ordering three would also come into play. The other aspect, bingo, I should mention, we've been having trouble with our bingo machine, and so there again, we've spent some money and we've ordered a new bingo machine, because bingo has been a tremendous moneymaker for us since COVID has kind of vanished. We still have people who won't come because they're afraid of groups, but it keeps growing. Robert, you want to talk about anything at store?
I volunteer at their bread place. It's located next to the Scappus store. And we have about 20 volunteers, we're open six days a week, Monday through Friday, 10 to 2, Saturday from 10 to 12. We pick up products from Dave's Killer Bread, Fran's, Bimbos, Fred Meyer, and Brown Butter Bakery donates to us also. We have about 350, 400 customers come in a week and it stays real busy. Really appreciate in this local area like Fred Meyer and Brown Butter Bakery helping us out.
Also, local gardeners also donate vegetables to the bread place.
Get a lot of vegetables in this time of year and really appreciate that.
Yes, please. Robert, I would be interested in knowing, I had an opportunity to meet with the farmer's market over the weekend. Is there any collaboration between the bread store and the farmer's market? Because they do have a program where certain individuals that have access to food assistance programs can actually get a voucher to bring down to the farmer's market so that they can get fresh produce from the growers that are actually here in the county. And so I would love to be at least able to put you together with the farmer's market to look at potentially next growth season, that there would just be a connection of the resources and trying to open up the availability to those most vulnerable populations that we could get the food to.
Sure, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Expand on bingo and garden.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Speed bingo, regular bingo.
Should be there now.
That's true, we have four of our regular Monday night bingo players right here with me.
Somebody's getting a good pot then.
Yeah. But basically, I just can expand on what Kay has talked about, because she does regularly meet and discuss all our activities and fundraisers. And I'm going to be at the fair tomorrow in St. Helens and at the bazaar on Saturday. And basically, I can just expand on her, but yes, I would like to get a committee to get, somehow get more members. We do need more regular senior citizen, senior community members, not only board members, but actually members. And gardeners, we need volunteers, we do need volunteers also, and that would be a good commission, how to be able to reach out besides Facebook, which Carolyn King does very well at, bringing in a lot of people to bingo, garden, people who come that actually, kids and families come to them. I mean, you'd be surprised, you should all come to our garden. Not only bingo, but the garden, it's fresh air and all that good stuff, yeah. Other than that, I think we just keep plowing ahead.
Well, that's basically all we can do. I should mention that October 1st, we are going to hold a bazaar at the center, which will include the, so whatever garden stuff is left at that time, and the quilters are putting together their products. And we've been quite fortunate in that a microwave bowl has been a tremendous seller. I don't know if everybody knows what they are, but it's, it's a pot holder for your bowl of soup to put in the microwave, so when you take it out, you don't burn your hand. And they are specially made to be used in the microwave with the filler. I don't know what it is, I knew at one point because I gave them the pattern for it, but that has been a big seller in just about all of our sales, even the one down on the fence. And this year, it wasn't just quilts on the fence either, it was placemats, table runners, even had some dolls down there. We've got plenty of dolls, if anybody has kids that want a fancy doll, and those will be on sale at the bazaar as well. And jewelry. So the quilters' wares, the jewelry, the garden, and the dolls will be the main features that we have. We'll also be having some card selections, occasional cards, Christmas cards, whatever, that have all been donated, and we have boxes and boxes of them, so more than we can use. Question?
It's for our social media expert. Isaac, are you in connection with whomever does their social media, or is there a way that your social media person can get in touch with our office? It's too late for the newsletter, but if there's a way we could advertise that October 1st event?
Certainly, we can do that.
Okay. Isaac's over there doing notes, so I know he's got it, but I just make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
And the board members.
Call for board members.
Yeah.
They're seeking board members.
Yes, that would be a great help.
Just to.
Always members too. Come join us.
Members, yeah.
Anyone over 18 is welcome to join.
Ooh.
That's a good note to be able to share out to the community, because I think that inherently, we just assume that there's, you know, a certain demographic that is trying to be asked to come through those doors. And I think as we have these conversations and that we can understand that this is a community space, that it's for families from young to our most senior. And what I find is valuable is when we have those connections with especially our youth, that we can have time to share stories and experiences and come together, because I think that that's very valuable for our community, especially with our young children, that they're kind of getting to understand what it is that created Scappus as a home for us. So I appreciate that effort. Kay, I did have a few questions I wanted to ask follow-up real quick.
Go ahead.
With the HVAC system, are, these are not window units that you're.
Oh, no, these are big units.
Are they for the rooftop, is that what?
They are all on the roof, yes.
Has the community center, the senior center ever used, it's called GoFundMe, it's an opportunity to raise money, and you can put it out essentially globally, so if somebody is very passionate around any particular subject matter, there might be at least ways to start collecting donations to be able to pay for or offset those costs.
Okay, we've talked about it within the board a couple of times, but as far as actually going out there and trying to figure out, I don't have time.
Sure. And I think.
If somebody would be willing to come in and help us with that and how, what we can do as a nonprofit.
Yeah.
I know there's different rules on all of those things. So if, if you've got somebody that would be willing to come help us get something like that going, it would be greatly appreciated.
I will see what I can do and connect with you, okay, Kay? All right. And then in addition, I know that you recently did a floor replacement at the facility, correct?
You, it's not complete, let's put it that way. It's been measured, but they haven't decided, they're now talking half of them that they want it linoleum tile instead of carpet, so we have to settle that. And we can only settle so much at a meeting.
I understand that pain at times, so. So knowing though, that you do have the funding in place.
Yes, we do have funding for the lobby flooring, yes.
Fantastic.
We also have funding for the back medical room office floor.
And I, yeah, my thought is trip hazards, I don't want to see, you know, some type of accident, but it's also.
Right, because the lobby is getting frayed, yes. I'm concerned about that also.
Well, I appreciate hearing those updates and I appreciate all of the board's service to, to our community and to the organization, and I look forward to coming down and playing some bingo. Thank you.
Hey, come on down. We've got kids coming in now, but if they're under 18, they need to be with their parents. But we do have young people playing bingo now, so it's moving.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor.
Kay, what happened with the roof and the siding?
Well, right now, we have started our siding fund, but it has to go on hold until we get the HVAC, because without heat and cooling, we're going to be dead in the water this winter. And so we are going to continue working towards the siding. No, I don't have enough funds to even begin about hiring a contractor.
Okay, and the roof?
The roof? Nobody knows. I've had two contractors up there that gave me pictures that indicate that we need to do something, but so far, nothing is leaking, knock on wood, within the center from the roof.
Okay, so the last, I have a follow-up question on that. So last update that we had had from you, I think it might have been indirectly, was that there were quotes that were issued on that and that you guys had decided to move forward on one of those, did that not happen?
We did not move forward on the siding bids, because quite frankly, they ranged from 18,000 to 118,000.
Okay.
And it kind of put a stopper on it from that standpoint, because that'll take us a long time to get 118,000 put together.
Yes, what about the roof though? The bids for the roof, the quotes?
The thrift store roof, okay, that was done. The thrift store, the money that was coming in for that, yes, the thrift store has been re-roofed. The bread place is put on hold. They tell me they're not leaking yet, so.
Yet, being the key.
I.
When you, when you first came in and talked to us about the roof issue and the siding issue, I feel like money was a bigger concern back then based on just what I'm sensing from you. And then, and I think that was because COVID had kind of put a really big wrench in that whole, in the program. What, if you don't mind me asking, since then, what are you seeing on bingo as far as the revenues that are coming in from bingo since the last time you were here?
Probably since the last time. Probably since the last time, there's the 30,000.
That's total in between...
Total, in that length of time.
Is there an average that's...
It runs, with all three sessions, right close to $500 every week.
Okay. That's an average, I would assume.
Mm-hmm. Quite frequently is more, but there are also the days when it's zero because somebody wins a pot. We have one pot that's 500, all it, I mean, starts at 500. We've got another one that's at 300. And the other one fluctuates depending on what the card sales are. So they are out there and available. A lot of times, it's only a $100 win that goes out on the blackouts, but it is a steady income. And I should also mention on the bread place that the donations have increased tremendously there since COVID is pretty much out of the picture. And that goes for the thrift store as well. So frequently, there's $500 days between the two of them.
Okay.
So we are building the bank accounts. We also don't want to deplete them at this point if we don't have to, because we started out basically at zero, and I don't want to be back there again.
Understood. And then the cost for the replacement, the three replacement HVAC units, is there money? Is there funds to cover? I was a little confused, because you talked about a grant, but yet you're going ahead and ordering those. So is there money?
There is 15,000 already from the city that is totally designated towards that HVAC unit, and we have the possibility of a grant. And I don't know that it'll pay for two more or just one more, but it's out there. I just have to finish the work to get it.
Okay. And then, is there a finance ability on the, or option, rather, on the two remaining HVAC units? Should you need to go that route?
Yeah, I think it's a possibility, because when the two were replaced here several years ago, there was part of it financed, yes.
Thank you.
I keep that in the back of my head, but I'd like to get it out front, too.
That's 15,000 apiece, correct?
Pardon?
15,000 apiece?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What do you need from us? Besides a check?
Well, I think what you're talking about in assisting with the public relations part of it and the outreach that, you know, our Facebook gal is doing a tremendous job. And in fact, one of the quilts sold at the quilt sale was because she put pictures on Facebook, and the lady in Washington saw the quilt blocks that were family heirlooms, more or less.
Wow.
And, sorry, the quilt blocks had already been made into a quilt, but she still came and bought that quilt based on the Facebook posting of those pictures. And Carolyn does a fantastic job there. She goes around to the quilt store, or the thrift store, and takes pictures there as the seasons change. She comes in for activities like bingo and whatnot and takes pictures. So we've got a good outlet there, but we need a little more. And she does put it out from there to other organizations, the Four Seas, and I'm not sure where else, but it does go out to other organizations.
Isaac, do we have Kay's email address for those of us that maybe have ways that we want to assist? Okay, thank you.
Better have it. You've been sending me stuff, so that's how we got here tonight.
That's my way of politely asking. Isaac, can you please pass along? Thank you.
Anything else?
I'd like to second what Counselor Lasowski has said and how much we appreciate all you guys are doing. You're all volunteers, and you're all hard workers, and no one works harder than Kay. She's there every day, and she, you know, she's a leader, and she's very bright, and she takes care of business, and just... You've got that, the senior center and the rest of the volunteers, you've got that plays a role in the right direction. So I appreciate all you guys' done very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We also appreciate City Manager being involved with the senior center, too. She's been involved in...
She's been a regular attending, attendee at our board meetings, so we really appreciate
Go ahead.
I was going to say, PUD has been represented at every meeting also.
All right.
My question about membership, do you have to live within city limits?
No.
Anybody?
Yeah.
You want in? Great, thanks.
Single memberships are 25. A couple in the same household is 35.
Thank you.
And that takes you from this last July 1st to June 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go in. In the work session, the regular session will start in five minutes. Time for a quick break.